Good evening, everyone. This is the regular meeting of the Town of Rutland Select Board. Today is Tuesday, October 22 at 6 o'clock. We have four out of five Select Board members Kurt Hathaway, Mary Ashcroft, Matt Geddy, and Sharon Russell. Joe DiNardo is not able to join us tonight. So please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Alrighty. So we have Select Board minutes from October 8th. They're in our packet. Is there any motion concerning those?
Both accept.
Motion's been made and suggested to approve the minutes. One, two, three. We were all here. Any additions, deletions, corrections? If not, all in favor of approving them, please say aye.
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 Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, passing them along. Board member announcements, are there any? Nope. Update from Select Board chair. We'll have a very brief executive session on a possible land transaction later. We'll have it at the end of the meeting. And November 15th is a deadline for circle articles. Please, folks, let's get them in on time. So November 15th, circle articles are due. Thank you. Right. Do we have any questions from the floor, public comments? Anyone wish to address the board? I'm looking at the usual suspects. Dana, are you here for the planning commission?
I think so.
Okay, very good. All right, because you're on the agenda. I mean, the Planning Commission's on the agenda.
Am I on the agenda for a planning question?
No.
No. So no, I'm not.
Okay.
He's your hazard mitigation player.
Oh, 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 okay.
I was designated to do that. I didn't know that I had.
Okay. All right. Well, we'll get to you actually fairly shortly.
That's fine. If I need to do something, I can check.
Marty and Stephanie are our presenters for that.
I figured they might be. That would be my guess. Okay.
I was gonna do a little bit of extra homework while we move the meeting on.
Okay.
Just in case.
Okay. And there's anyone calling in who is not otherwise on? Okay, we'll just call that no. So let's hop down then to action items. A, board to meet with members from the Rutland Regional Planning Commission regarding, it's actually RRPC regarding the LHMP, which I'm assuming is hazard mitigation and these folks who have been working on it. So please come up and tell us what you've got for us and what we need to do.
This is Stephanie Bork, and she's from Rutland Regional Planning. And
Hi, Stephanie.
We're working tremendously with
Heard your name a lot. Thank you.
Bill, and Dave, and myself.
Thank you.
I'm putting together our plan. And she's just terrific at putting information together and sorting out the junk and getting the good stuff in.
Okay. Well, thank you for that introduction, Marty.
You're welcome.
Yeah. So I've handed out some packets for you folks. The first is kind of a project status sheet that pretty much covers all the high points of what I'll be touching on tonight. It also includes a hard copy of the current working version of the Hazard Mitigation Plan, as well as a copy of the review tool. And this is the document that we will be preparing at the end of this effort to demonstrate to Vermont Emergency Management that your plan includes all of the federally required components, and it provides a crosswalk to indicate which page you can find each of those requirements. So I thought it's helpful to you as the folks who will ultimately adopt this plan when we get to the end, to just kind of see, you know, what's required and how your plan will fulfill those requirements. So in terms of why we're here tonight, as Marty said, I've been working with with him, with Bill, and with Dave to update Rutland Town's 2019 Hazard Mitigation Plan. It's a five-year plan, so it's set for expiration and renewal. So we're kind of at the midpoint in the process. So just a quick reminder, you know, what is the purpose of this plan? It's to identify all natural hazards facing the town, rank those natural hazards according to your local vulnerabilities, and then develop strategies to reduce the risk posed by those hazards.
I can interrupt for one second.
Sure.
And I want to interrupt to add one thing to this, that I spent a day up at the transfer station with some information and got talking to a lot of people and asking them what they felt was a hazard. And yeah, that's on the back page, what I had up. And you've got Bill there in your office, aren't they?
Yeah, yes.
And we've taken that as to where we have to look and concentrate things on, so.
Good. Thanks for doing that.
Yeah, Marty's touched on an element of this planning process that is distinctly different than what was done in 2019. You know, FEMA has issued guidelines in 2023 to kind of update how local hazard mitigation plans are to be prepared, and they've placed a much greater emphasis on engaging the whole community throughout the plan development process. So that was an example of one of the ways that the town has been engaging to help inform the risk assessment. So really, what I wanted to just share with you folks tonight is that, you know, this plan is going to eventually outline a long-term strategy to reduce natural disaster losses and hopefully help you break that cycle of disaster damage reconstruction and repeated damage. On the right-hand side of the kind of project status sheet, I've shown for you kind of the work that we've done to date. So we kicked off this planning process in September, and I've worked with Bill, Dave, and Marty from September through October to complete that risk assessment and identify the hazards. So that represents kind of the first critical milestone in this plan update process. You know, they've completed the risk assessment for a broad range of natural hazards, and they've identified those hazards that they think pose the highest risk to the town. So the draft plan is being shared now to encourage input from both local officials and the public at large on how this team has assessed the town's risk to natural hazards. So you'll find when you open up the plan and start reading through it, right? You know, there's a whole half of the document that doesn't exist yet, right? All we're doing right now is trying to make sure that we've adequately defined the problems, okay? That's how I kind of lay persons describe the hazard identification and risk assessment part of the plan. And it's important that we properly defined the problems so that when we get into developing the strategy, we know what we're trying to address. So tonight's presentation also kicks off a two-week public comment period. So we're looking to close the public comment period on this draft plan Tuesday, November 5th. And I'd ask that all comments be emailed to me so that I can assemble those and share them with your local planning team to figure out how to address if we receive any. But really, it's pretty important for the planning team to hear back from the board regarding, you know, whether you think they're on track, right? Moving in the right direction. It will be very challenging after this point in the process to kind of circle back and revisit the risk assessment and hazard identification. Because as you can see from the next steps at the bottom of the project status sheet, we're going to kind of be aggressively moving through the development of the strategy and looking to finalize the remaining sections of the plan that you'll see in the Table of Content so that we can get this submitted for the start of the approval process probably in late February. Okay?
So have our town department heads been contacted for their input at this point? Fire, police, highway?
This would be the kickoff for all of that.
Okay. So we all need to comment by November 5th?
So you have another board meeting, roughly two weeks from tonight, rescheduled to the 4th?
Yeah.
What I'd ask is that you have an agenda item on your November 4th meeting to discuss any comments that you as a board or local officials have for the plan. And that way, they could be documented in the meeting minutes, and Bill could just share a copy of the meeting minutes with me.
Okay. Bill, could you do that? Thank you very much. And department heads, please get comments to us. Because you folks respond to emergencies, you would know where some of these hot-button areas are.
Right. So there's two options to view the plan. More information, I've given you the web address for a landing page that is exclusively designed to help people understand what you're doing, the planning process, where we're at in that process, and download a current draft of the plan. So if you want to look at it online, visit that website, tinyurl.com/RutlandTownLHMP25. There's also a hard copy that I will leave here for viewing at the town office. And I've left for Bill kind of a larger set of the maps that are included in this plan that kind of show areas of concern for extreme winter storms and floods. So if someone wants to view something in hard copy, it'll be available here at the town.
Hey, any questions? We have our homework. Dana?
How long is the document? Is that accurate?
It's like, it's
The page number?
Longer.
That would be helpful.
Thirty-nine pages plus one, two, three appendices.
So the current content starts on page three and goes to page 21. So it's about 19 pages of text. And then there's an appendix. And I don't have appendix A and B in there yet because we haven't gotten to that part of the plan. But appendix C is the summary of the public engagement. And so that is several pages long, mainly because it just provides a, you know, recap of the survey that was administered, as well as the pop-up event information that Marty was talking about. And it just provides a lot of examples of the different engagement methods that have been implemented so far in Phase 1 of the plan development. So I think you'll find it to be a fairly easy read.
It's got pictures.
It's got a lot of pictures and graphics, and, you know, it's written so that, you know, the average citizen can understand the plan. It's not overly technical.
Is the Planning Commission meeting between now and?
Two days from now.
Okay, good. Would you folks have a chance to? Yeah, exactly. Right. Do what you can. Thank you.
Guess I got a chance. I got one more shot.
Any questions from Select Board members or department heads who will want to take a walk through this, please? Okay, so it'll be on our agenda. Hopefully, we'll receive comments. Take it home and read it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your work. Appreciate it.
Thank you for coming.
Yes, of course. I'm happy to present on your behalf.
Okay, homework's a good thing. Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. Next up, Ed Dumas, Town Police Chief.
Yeah, I'm updating some of these. We didn't tag that together and rehashed over the numbers a little bit, a little bit less. I'm thinking it was, they still are a little bit. Ben said she hadn't changed any way she did it, but it went down slightly on the percentage of
So it dropped.
Yeah, so we'll see this month here because of the drop in residency at the local hotels. Maybe it has something to do with this. Maybe. We'll see. I guess you could make that correlation.
Do we know how many folks are being housed right now?
I don't. I know I had a list of probably 40 different names that have left. Cortina.
And do we have any upticks in people camping or encroaching?
We've had some of those complaints. We went down on the dead-end section of Park Street. Another officer didn't locate any RVs parked in there. I'm not sure. Maybe they left when the local farmer showed up and said something to them, I guess. Or maybe we didn't go to the right spot. So I haven't heard any more on that. I know we've had a few people, probably we town or go back to their old lifestyle because rather than the state taking care of them, they've relied on family and friends like they used to.
Okay. All right. Any questions about either? Because we also have your
Yes.
calls from
Also, Home Depot, they're working. I know they have a contract with a local company at this point in time. Just waiting for signage to put up, and then they'll give the people the warnings, and they'll start towing them out of there too. So fair warning.
We're out of that.
We're, yeah.
Okay.
We'll assist if there's any difficulties with trespassing. Obviously, we'll give ones, say, hey, leave or be arrested, and go from there. But try to work with them as much as we can.
Okay.
And in light of that, we are full down at the mission. And some of the, we've had to make some adjustments with the number of females. I don't know how that man lives himself when you kick out a pregnant woman with a baby, already one baby. And the cost of rents are and there's not many available even at that. So I don't know the answer. You have to wait till it gets cold enough and then open back up again.
December 1st.
Yes, I see some K-9 assists in September.
Yes.
Getting that in between class or?
Yeah, actually, so he's left class a couple of times with sister other agencies with problems. That's another thing. He will be graduating Friday of this week. We will have our K-9 officer back with our K-9 fully certified. We did have, we did photographs today, so professionally done. So if we have an issue where our name's going to be put in the paper, we'll put a convict picture, convict picture like we had before, so. So, yes. And the other thing I'll mention is that we've got the background done on SRO that we would like to hire. And I just have one format that I nail into this previous officer's going to retire to move, send to his agency. One of the things the state requires us to do, and it's not that we really have to hear back from it. It'd be nice if we did, but we're required to request information. So we'll see what happens from there.
School resource officer, so that's good.
It is.
It's good.
At some point now, I'd like to discuss his salary, I guess, with those police
Police committee, yeah. And we also need to have a police committee meeting to start working on the budget.
Okay.
So.
And I sat down with Carrie for a few minutes there, and she explained, clarified the number of things to me, so I could understand a little bit.
Okay, good.
We're all set. We haven't been working the evening patrols at the Plaza, but probably November 1st. We'll pick those up again heavily now for the hall, all the way through the holidays.
Okay.
And also, we have an extra officer, and officers coming back from there. So our schedules will be changing up some. We'll be working more evenings. We should have coverage other than vacation and sick time seven days a week. Not 24 hours a day, but at least someone will be on seven days a week.
That's good.
Yeah.
So we're almost through the crunch time.
Yes.
Good, good, good.
Ted and I have a few cases to catch up on.
And you're going to be up at school on holiday?
Friday.
Friday, yeah.
The certain officer's got children there, and he plans on being there, so.
Okay, good, good. I understand there's a little competition between the police department.
I just told about it today, but I have not heard of it. It hasn't been brought to my attention.
Okay, probably better.
Okay.
Okay, questions for our Chief of Police? What days are good to meet?
Give me November 16th for about eight or nine days, not good. Prior to that and after that.
We should probably meet, I would say, before that, so we start working on the budget.
Okay. Monday through Friday is good. Or, excuse me, Monday through Wednesday is good.
Okay. I forgot, Select Board.
But if you can't, no, we can do Thursday or Friday if we have to.
6:00 PM, Select Board. Oh, no. Just a reminder, November, the Select Board meeting, the first one in November is on Monday. And do we agree at 6:00 or 5:30? What do we put up there? We didn't. Usual time, 6:00?
Sure.
Okay. We're doing that, of course, because the next day is Election Day. And then we have, so I was looking at the first week isn't going to be good. The second week in November. Sharon and Chief Dumas, you know, November 11th, Monday is Veterans Day, so we want to avoid that.
Matt is on the police committee.
Who is? Matt is. Okay, sorry. You're on fire committee, and we also need to meet. All right. It's that Personnel Committee stuff that's fried my brain. What have you got? Matt, what works for you?
On the week of the 11th?
Yeah. It's like Tuesday or Wednesday would be.
Would be ideal.
Yep.
Tuesday, 12th.
Okay, what time?
Does 4:00 work?
4:00, okay.
Yep.
All right, very good.
I'm sure I should put calendars before.
Oh, yeah, both calendars. Okay, good. Bill, if we could get things in motion, so perhaps we can get our budget worksheets, that would be really good. Thank you. Anything else for our Chief of Police? News on the SRO. Good news on our K-9 officer coming back.
Yeah, he passed all his tests, so I guess just their time at this point. I'm putting in the rest of the time for it to be certified.
Okay, all right. And how's his handler? Is he passing all of the tests?
He's doing very well.
Okay.
Yes, very well.
Good. Glad to hear it.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thanks. All right. Next up, Mike Rowe, Town Rec Director.
Good evening.
Hi, Mike.
I don't have much. Just a huge thank you to Chuck and the crew, Jason, Chris. I guess we could say Ben too. And then also to Chuck Hall. We redid Dewey Field last Wednesday and Thursday. So that looks beautiful right now. It's getting water on it. We laid about 7,200 feet of sod. We felt that over the weekend. I didn't think that. That was a lot of sod for a little field. Plus, we did all the groundwork and laid in topsoil before we did that. So it's currently being watered for the rest of the week. Water will be shut off early next week at Dewey and up at Northwood in the back. We have an event this weekend, so we're shutting the water off later on. Basketball signups can start. They can sign up anytime you want. The soccer ends on Saturday with a jamboree at Autumn Valley for our U-10 and 12s. So that'll be a fun time. It's in the morning. We have our trick-or-treat on the trail Friday night from 4:30 to 6:00, right behind school. Rumor has it there's a fire truck going to be in attendance, potentially a police car. And right now, they're talking a water and a taser battle. I'm kidding. It might be a little bit of a competition. Who can give out more candy between the two departments? I just heard that. I don't know. So that'll be a fun time. We'll probably have 400 or 500 people. The weather looks really good for it. So please feel free to come on down, bring your kiddos down, and walk around the trails. The eighth grade has spent a lot of time planning the events. They run the events. So we've been doing that since the first week of school, planning that, so.
These are the same eighth grade that helped with townwide celebration?
Correct.
Good.
Yep. So big kudos to them. So if it fails, it's all on them. No, I'm just kidding. They've done a great job, so we'll see it all come to fruition on Friday night. Other than that, we're just kind of rolling along until it gets a little bit colder. And as soon as we're ready for budget stuff, then we'll have our meeting and go over our budget. And unless anybody has anything for me. Dave, did I forget anything?
Nope.
So that's pretty much.
Any questions for Rec Director? Seth, thank you very much.
We're musketeers.
Dave Sears, Town Road Commissioner.
Good night, Mr. Rowe. Always staying.
Hello, everybody.
Hi, Dave.
We developed a, I was informed about a sinkhole on Post Road sidewalk down across from Net Terrace. We investigated that. The top is gone and the culvert. So we just filled it for now, trying to get a bunch of stuff buttoned up so we can get into the next phase of what's coming. So we'll keep an eye on it. Plan to replace it in the spring. So while we were doing that, we said we might as well open up everything there. They're all the same age. Let's see what we got. So we've got like three of them that really need to be replaced. There's 14 total, so we've got three that are either the the bands are rotted, or they're starting to get infiltration through the sides or the bottoms or whatever. So we got a pretty good list of that. We got A1 coming tomorrow to clean all the sumps and all the basins, so those will all be cleaned. But we will have some culvert work to do in the spring down there. We replaced the culvert on Seward Road that had no top in it, about a three-foot sinkhole. When we got there, somebody had placed a road sign in it to let us know where it was. It wasn't really a road sign. It was a parking lot sign for the old Moore Business Farms, but it was on a post. It was it was out of the ground that far, and it was, anyway. So we replaced that last week, and we're actually going to go there tomorrow and try to pave that. Today, we paved the two ditches on Pamela and Sand Hill from two culverts that we replaced there. Same thing, rotted out sinkholes coming apart. So we fixed those a couple of weeks ago, and we paved those ditches today. Like Mike said, we Uh like Mike said, we spent some time last week at uh Dewey. And last but definitely not least is uh two Fridays ago, we had a sewer plug in front of Days Inn. Um I called A one, they came down. It was like four thirty, five o'clock in the afternoon. Uh they put their jetter in and you can use your imagination and figure out how a Monster Energy drink came out of the pipe, but it did. And a lot of other stuff too, not just that, but yeah, so some, uh it was, it was quite the plug. But they got it.
Okay, it's clear now?
It's clear. Um.
For the time being.
For the time being. We did um check on some other manholes, some of our more problem manholes, and we have found some uh bricks that have come off the shelves and fallen into the inverts. So I actually called um a couple of guys that I know in the city and we're gonna borrow their confined space stuff hopefully Thursday, if not first part of next week and go down there pull some of the bricks out of the inverts and at least let them give these manholes a chance to flow. It's not gonna fix everything down there, but at least we can get them running, so. If anybody's bored, I can let you know what day and we can send you down a manhole.
It's a great time.
It's fun.
Oh, yeah, it's a blast, it's blast.
Don't look at me, I'm not interested.
Oh, come on. Yeah, true.
And I always liked you, Ed.
Past tense.
It's a real blast when you're down there trying to trowel out an invert and you hear the toilet flush up.
Oh, yeah. Been there. I got the T-shirt.
So. Do we have some schedule for doing these or, or do we just wait for a sinkhole?
For the culverts?
Yeah, we'll start with the culverts.
So last fall, uh we went out and inventoried over seven hundred culverts. Problem was, a lot of them were full to some extent. So uh if you remember back this spring, we went out and we, we hired A one for a week, which is twelve thousand dollars, and we cleaned as many as we could in a week and we got to seventy of them, so we got ten percent of them. Um if we can find something that we can, you know, get the camera and we go out and inspect them. I mean, right now we're playing catch-up. I'm gonna be honest, we're, we're, we're behind, forever behind, and we're playing catch-up and you know, right now it's kinda when the sinkhole shows up, we go and investigate and take care of it from there. Uh trying to be as proactive as possible, but it's gonna take time.
Use some like carryover balance to pay A one to make a bigger way at this. It's cause ten percent a year.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I, I get it. I, I don't, I mean, budget's coming up, so we're, I was planning on talking about that when we get to that point, like how do we?
Good.
You know, how do we try to increase that? I mean, it's three thousand dollars a day and.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's kinda the nature of the beast of how our town was built. A lot of that infrastructure is all the same age and.
That's what it is. I mean, all that galvanized stuff was put in the seventies-ish and it's all the same age. And we, you know, like Post Road, we had three of them that are, there's infiltration and then, you know, there's probably ten of them that could probably last another five years. They're, you know, they're not coming through. They're starting to rust or starting to show some age, but they can still, they got some life left in them. But they won't eventually. It's, it's what galvanized is.
All right.
So keep plugging away.
Yep.
Suggestions on the budget then?
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions for our Town Road Commissioner? Um whatever happened to the name of the plow contest?
Just haven't had time to do it.
Okay, all right.
I still got all the names. I just gotta, I gotta go through and, cause there's a lot of them. We got names, but no contact information, names of people, but no phone numbers, phone numbers, no people.
Not a high priority.
Not really.
Okay, all right.
No, sewer coming out of the manhole takes priority.
Yeah.
And that offer still stands. Anybody that wants to come, I back up, come on with it.
Thank you. Appreciate the offer.
Just look that way. He's, he's skinny and tall enough, so why not? No, 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 you, sir.
All right, thank you, Dave.
All right, thank you, guys. Have a good night.
You too. All right, Larry Delveneri is on the call. Do you have something for us or anything for us?
Yeah, wake up.
Isn't now.
Probably not. Okay, so if you decide you wanna talk to us, um let us know, but we'll assume that everything is fine right now. Then we'll move on to Marsha Choffee, Head Lister.
First of all, may I say, may I call this for my uh little outburst at the beginning of your meeting? Didn't realize that.
It was fairly, it was fairly accurate though, Marsha.
Someone here in the room said, what's going on? Who's talking? I said, nothing. They're just, they're just, you know, BSing, so anyway.
You were not recording, so you're in the clear.
Yeah, you're okay.
Thank goodness. But anyway, um we had a webinar last week that has to deal with Act sixty-eight, which is the original House four eighty bill dealing with reappraisals. Um the Vermont Tax Department and specifically PVNR hired um a firm, which is the International um International Association of Assessing Officers, the I double A O that we refer to. There were surveys sent out to stakeholders as well as um firms around the, or states around the, the country. Uh I'm not gonna bore you. It's seventy-nine pages of reading. Um but what I've pulled out are some of the major points that um I feel that, you know, you as a board need to know. Uh one of the major questions that was asked was, does the state of Vermont have the appropriate amount of assessment talent with staffing to complete current legal requirements of local jurisdictions? Answers from stakeholders were eleven percent said yes, eighty-eight percent said no. So at the moment, we do not have the personnel to conduct the reappraisals that need to be done in the state of Vermont. Um and I've, I've, I've got this presentation. If anyone wants to, you know, to take a look at it, I can send you the link as well as the link for the um for bill itself, the H forty, four eighty, Act sixty-eight. Um the other, uh I think pertinent question that was asked was, what strategies or initiatives does your state offer to attract and retain skilled professionals to the assessment industry? Answers coming back were competitive compensation and benefits, remote work, flex time. Assessment designation holders receive bonuses for holding certain designations and free courses. Most of our courses, other than the I double A O, are free through PVNR and through uh NIMREC as well. Um and I can tell you that they did confirm that towns that are sending in RFPs, firms are not even looking at them. They're putting them in a desk and waiting for an appropriate time to open them up. So it doesn't matter when, we're, we're, we are working on our um reappraisal. Um and we will be setting that forth. But right now, because the reappraisal firms are out to twenty twenty-nine, they won't even look at any requests for proposals. And this was confirmed by PVNR, specifically, you know, Joe Remick, the director. Um. Well, some of the other things were, I mean, does Vermont have adequate training opportunities? Um hundred and seventy percent of people um surveyed said yes, thirty percent said no. So there are education opportunities out there if people want to take advantage of them, which they should be doing. Um other things that um stakeholders responded to were improvements. Education offered at high schools, trade schools. We've talked about this, that it would be, would be wonderful to have um, you know, Stafford offer courses in assessment. Um, you know, it's a, it's an area that really has been neglected for many years. And I think we need to get some of our young people involved at the ground level to show them what opportunities are out there for them. Um it's, i- it's an extended period of time before you become an assessor because there are so many prequalifications that you have to meet prior to even being able to take the I double A O courses to be um qualified as an assessor. Um. Uh yeah, more, more training for listers. Well, I think the training for listers is really quite adequate. Um the problem is, they're not always offered at the right time of the year. For instance, after the March election, data collection, which is critical, is not offered to new listers until a couple of months after they have been um voted in. So these people, you know, for March elections, new, new listers are, you know, hampered because they really don't have an idea of what they're supposed to be doing. Um the other thing is um what career advancements, opportunities for those in the assessment industry? And once again, it, well, it's kinda half and half. Got fifty-five percent saying yes and forty-four point four, seven-four percent saying no. So that, that is an area that needs to be looked into. Um well, in, improvements. I mean, there's a whole list of improvements that could be, you know, that stakeholders have um addressed to um to make sure that uh, you know, going, going forward, um we have advancement opportunities for listers or for listers becoming full-time assessors. And as you know, um in the town of Rutland, the Board of Listers is voted on. Um the only way to diminish the Board of Listers is the vote of the people. Um which I think at some point in the near future needs to be addressed. And something just happened to my computer here. I don't know what is going on.
We can still hear you, if that helps.
Yeah, I just got, ah, my HP Smack. Oh, there we go. Okay, sorry. Um. And, and just a lot more about training and, and advancements and possibilities and but I think the critical thing right now is the fact that um we will not be able to get a reappraisal until twenty twenty-nine. That doesn't mean that we're gonna, you know, stop and not even proceed with our RFP. We are going forward. But there's so much that the RFP includes that we as a Board of Listers are finding out every time we go out and do a site visit that, you know, we're marking down. Well, we gotta make sure that the reappraisal firm is going to do A, B, C, and D so that we get a true reappraisal of a property, whether it be commercial or residential. So that's um that's, well, that's kind of the summation of the entire webinar. I didn't go into the national statistics because I don't think we, you know, we really need to get involved in that. I mean, we've got, you know, states out there that do, wrote, that appraisals every single year. Um I don't, most of the stakeholders in Vermont didn't agree that we need to do one every single year. But the majority, the consensus was that, yes, six years is a good time to be able to do a reappraisal. So I'm open to any questions you may have.
Um I, I noticed an article, I think it was V T Digger, about a new program at the University of Vermont to start training municipal officials, and they were talking about a, a pilot class that included, I think, a town treasurer, Select Board members, and a lister. Um so I was, it, it sounds like UVM is kind of starting to look at how to help train some of our town officials, so here's hoping that they become a partner.
Right. And I know there is um extensive training too uh for BCA members and um uh, you know, through VLCT. Um and I think that, that should be um, you know, reviewed as well because um we don't have a lot of BCA hearings, thankfully, but the ones that we do have. And right now, we are actually working on a form to put on our website that people can fill out designating the areas that are applicable to asking for an abatement of taxes. Um.
Good.
Per the thirty-two VSA, um so that people have, have something right in front of them. They can fill it out. Otherwise, they're sending a letter to Carrie as the clerk, which is where it would have to go anyway. And um this last time, uh we didn't have enough members to be able to hold a BCA. And this lady found a form for Morristown, which, you know, she used the form saying Town of Morristown. Um but uh we do have a form that we're looking at that is quite extensive and I think will be of useful, a useful tool going forward to be able to offer this to town residents based on the qualifications in the statute as to why, when they can apply for an abatement.
Yeah, that sounds like a great idea. Thanks.
Yep. So.
Okay. Any other questions for Marsha? Alrighty.
Hey, and if you wanna see the full um, you know, um slideshow of the, the webinar, I'd be happy to send you, you know, the link to it so that you could take a look at it.
Yeah, would you send it to Bill, please?
Sure.
And he can.
Yep.
Distribute it. Thanks.
Yep, I'd be happy to. Thank you.
Okay, have a good evening.
You too. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, Chris Clark, Town Fire Chief. Good evening.
Good evening. Just a few things. Um we did the Wonder Feet Museum Trick or, or Truck or Treat the other day. That was a huge turnout, so that went well. Uh our new pickup did show up. Me and another member went down to get it last two Fridays ago. I had the radios put in it yesterday and it'll be getting lettered on Thursday, so then that'll be complete. Um I put two applications on your desk tonight, Mary.
I do have them.
For your approval.
Are these both, they look like both town residents, right?
Uh one is in the city, actually.
Okay, the, the Stratton Road is fifteen Stratton Road, that's the city one?
Yep.
Okay.
We met with both. They both passed their background checks, so we're looking.
Very good.
Approved.
And they're both um s- uh not junior firefighters, senior firefighters, whatever you call them.
Yes, correct.
Okay, um Ale- Ale- Alejandro Anderson of fifteen Stratton Road and Daryl uh Sonowski.
Yep.
Of Floria, it's in Center, Rutland. And you've, uh they've passed everything, so I would entertain a motion to approve.
Will go approve.
Good. Motion is made and seconded to approve each of these as firefighters, Town of Rutland. Um any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye?
I said aye.
Thank you. Uh, motion carries four to nothing and I will, I guess we all get to sign it. Okay. How many do we have now, firefighters, Chris?
I believe there's thirty-five.
Thirty-five?
Yep.
All right. And we're circulating the applications for signature.
That's all I had.
Okay. Okay, thank you. So Sharon and I need to meet with you to start working on the budget.
Okay.
And what's, okay, it's, Sharon, are you okay the week after? It would be, thanks. The week of, uh, November twelfth, thirteenth, fourteenth, or fifteenth. And I know you have, you work, so. And Police Committee's meeting on Tuesday, the twelfth at four o'clock, so what works for you, Chris?
Uh, as long as it's four o'clock or after, I can probably do any day. Wednesdays are a little tight for me, so any other day would be good.
Okay. Um, how about Thursday, the fourteenth? Sharon, do you know your schedule?
I don't, but I think that's okay, Mary.
Okay. So four o'clock on November fourteenth, Fire Committee meeting? Does that sound okay, Chris?
Yep, that sounds good to me.
Good, thank you. All right. Any questions of our Town Fire Chief? Guess not. Um, happy trick-or-treating and I, I hope you guys do well against the Police Department up at Rutland Town School.
Uh, we will. We'll definitely take the trouble in this one.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening. All right. Carrie Clark, Town Clerk and Treasurer.
Good evening. Two, hi. Two things. There is, um, a tobacco license permit that I put on your desk for, um, the Stewart Shop. If you remember last Select Board, you approved the, um, liquor license for the same company. This actually came down just after, um, we approved the others. Um, they must've just had a little delay or something. So they're buying the jollies, just to refresh your memories. Um, so we approved, I think, one or two of them last time, and this is just their tobacco one that they're asking for approval.
Yeah, this application for tobacco substitute endorsement. That's, okay. So is that like vaping?
I don't know.
Yeah, all right. Um, this is for three fifty-one U S for Rutland. Is there a motion?
Will be approved.
And the chief indicates no, no issues. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Um, no, no, so it's approved by the Select Board. Ten, twenty-two, twenty-four, and we can all sign this? Okay?
And, yeah, the only other thing that I wanted to remind people about for the election that's coming up in a couple of weeks, um, we've had a lot of people bring in their ballots that, you know, they voted and they wanted to drop them in the box. A lot of people, um, still need a little bit of a reminder that, um, if they wish to vote in person and they received a ballot already in the mail, they have to bring that ballot to the polling place. Um, and they can vote on it at the polling place. If they forget it, that's fine. Um, we do have an affidavit for them to sign, which is not new. This happened in many previous elections. Um, but a lot of people are forgetting that maybe they should bring their ballot with them. Um, so this is just a gentle reminder for that. Um, other than that, they can return their ballot by mail or come to my office, vote in my office with their ballot. Um, or if they wanted to just drop it off, I have a locked box inside my office as well as the mail slot on the outside for after hours. Um, I've had several people ask me what I do with the ballots. And the simple answer is we check them in. We have a program. We find your name. We say that you've returned your ballot successfully. And then they stay sealed until Election Day. And that, at that time, there are two ballot clerks, um, that open them up and feed them through the tabulator. So, um, they stay safe and locked up until that point. So I just wanted to mention that as well. Um, so continue bringing your ballots in and also come to the polls if you'd like to. And, uh, it's just a couple of weeks away and we should have our polling schedule up and running, um, after Friday. I do have a quick meeting for that and I did get a lot of response. We should have a lot of people that are available to work the polls and come to the meeting, so things are working out.
Okay. Good. Thank you, Carrie. And especially about the reminder, I dropped off mine, so you'll see it in your lockbox.
Great.
Um, so thanks for setting that up. It does make, makes it easy to vote.
Absolutely. And that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for our Town Clerk and Treasurer? Nope. Okay. Thanks very much, Carrie, and have a great evening.
You too.
Thank you. Um, Mike Delahanty? I don't see Mike. Uh, John Paul Fagnant. Uh, Town Health Officer, Public Safety Building Clerk and Second Constable. Hi, JP.
Hi, good evening. Uh, not too much tonight. I, uh, did get price from uh, Central Vermont Communications for the equipment to outfit the, uh, the, the, uh, radios. And that, uh, Bill has a copy of that invoice. We'll get to you, but that came to twelve thousand, seven hundred dollars. So we'll need, that, that's the outfitting of the operational side of it, the radio decks, the heads, the antennas, things like that.
Okay. And was that, was that part of the money that we've, well, we haven't approved yet. That's not part of the contract, so this is the additional money we need to provide for?
Yes.
Okay. And is that part of the?
It's not part of the. It's part of the operational needs of the building, but it wasn't part of the construction contract.
Okay. Is that part of the thirty-three thousand or is it in addition to?
It's in addition to.
Okay.
So how many more of those are we gonna have?
Yeah.
As, as many as it takes to finish the building. Um, this was always.
Where we run out of money, I mean.
Well, I mean, we're at the end of it now. Um, as far as the building, the second coat of paint's on. They're planning to do the paving. Um, you know, doing all the detail work now.
So what, um, why is it that we need new radios? We're not able to utilize radios that we already have?
Uh, that, someone else would have to speak to that.
So, Chris, anyone? Chris, if you're speaking, you're on mute.
Yeah. We're watching Chris's box and he's still showing as muted. Okay. Um, Chief Dumas, oh, here we go. Go ahead, Chris.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
Uh, JP is talking about ordering radio parts and I'm wondering, uh, I guess, to put it simply, why do we need radio parts? I mean, assuming you've got radios already, so what are these radios?
Uh, you never had radios for that room that you got the grant for. So we don't have radios for that room. And when they ripped down the old building, they never took the antennas down, so they are gone. I don't know why they didn't come off, but they didn't. So we are without antennas at the moment.
So when you say radios for that room, is this emergency operations center that's separate from other fire department radios or are these the radios that you would be using?
No, they're separate. You have to have them in there because you guys got a grant for that, as far as I know. I had nothing to do with the, any part of it, but that's as far as I understand. You have to have them in there to receive your grant money.
So it's not a fire department issue. It's a emergency operation. Okay. Does anybody present know whether this is covered by the grant?
What you said is that if, if you want all the grant money, I don't, maybe we've got it already, but.
I think we do. Yeah. Um, so it's at what, a hundred and fifty-seven thousand, I think?
Something like that.
Yeah, yeah. All right. So here's my question. Do we have enough to vote on this twelve thousand? I don't have any paperwork on it or anything else, or do we wait until next meeting? Um, and then have something in writing so we'll know what we're voting on?
So is Bill there?
Yes, he is.
Um, we could get this to you tomorrow, but we need to get this operational side up and running. Uh, they haven't ordered this equipment yet, so, um, if we could approve it tonight, we do have the actual sales quote from CVC paging. It could be available to all of you.
So if we put antenna, if we put our antennas up and stub the antenna wires into the emergency management room, can we use the spare radios on the truck forty-one that are in the Pelican cases? In terms of emergencies and set those up and hook the antenna to them?
Yeah, you're talking Greek to me.
Yeah, I'm kind of looking at Bill while I was saying this.
Oh, okay.
Because the radios are going to be installed in there.
Okay, and the remote heads?
Heads are going to be.
So not really then.
Not without.
It was worth a shot.
So we may, I make a motion that we pay to get that stuff that's needed.
So CVC paging, twelve thousand dollars?
Yep.
It's, uh, the actual number, Mary, is twelve thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars and eighty-six cents.
Okay. And that was your motion, wasn't it, Sharon?
Yes.
Um, is CVC paging a preferred vendor? Okay.
They are.
All right.
And they're the only vendor. Yeah.
Yeah. All right. Any further discussion? Uh, and, did you second?
I didn't, yep.
Motion's made. Is there a second?
Second it.
Motion's made and seconded.
I've made some motions. I'll let somebody else second it. Spread the love around the room.
And this will come.
Oh, thank you.
Um, it's in addition to the thirty-three thousand dollars, so it's also got to come out of our capital construction carryover, which was.
Hundred and seventy-nine thousand.
Hundred and seventy-nine, six, twelve. All right. If there's no further discussion, all in favor of this motion, please say aye.
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 Aye? Anyone opposed? Okay. There's the approval. Let's see also.
Thank you for that. I'll, I'll notify them tomorrow and get that right in the pipeline. And that's all I have. No other bills.
Okay. Making a note on my little sheet that we came up with the other night about how much was left and now we have less. All right. Anything else for JP? Um, Town Health Officer, Second Constable. Any of that? If not, thank you very much, John Paul. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Have a good night. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Aye. Um, see, Barbara Noisepulling told me she was not going to be able to attend, but we have Dana Peterson from the Planning Commission. So if you have something for us?
You don't have to.
I don't have to?
No.
Oh, wow.
You can run just as fast as you want.
Yeah.
I am assuming that Barbara updated you as, um, after our last Planning Commission meeting with respect to the work we're doing.
Yes.
Um, the subdivision ordinance that has gone, that we've gotten information back from the town attorney. So we're working on that. We're also working on the Act one eighty-one, uh, directions that you've given us.
Okay.
That's, that's basically it. We, um, don't have much of a significant update. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer.
If you look under Action Item C, we put this on the agenda just to remind us that we needed to keep track. Um, the Board to discuss Act two fifty revisions and the Village Center designation and we're hoping the Planning Commission will give us some guidance as to whether there are places in town that would qualify for.
I think that's on our agenda.
Okay. All right, good. So we'll consider that as checked off.
You have the task.
I know. Keep doing that, too. And. All right. Any, um, any questions for Dana, as long as you have them here? All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Um, Bill Sweet, Town Administrator.
Hopefully we can keep this momentum going. I like this.
I know, isn't it good?
Blowing right through the fist.
Yeah, we're doing all, all right. A couple of things in your packet, which are important. Uh, one is a reimbursement request, so I'm actually going to get us money back. Um, this is for our.
Well, aren't we just special?
Uh, this is for the Route Seven North Sidewalk Project. Uh, our next invoice is number one. Mary, you have the whole thing. It's just, it's, it's very long, but the letter, the cover letter is the only thing that really matters. Uh, you've, you've done this before, just signing that, that that's what we're asking for.
This is for, it looks like the Regional Commission, Stephanie Burke's work.
Yes.
On, um, being the, what, overseer of the project.
Municipal Project Manager.
There she is.
And it is worth every single one of those pennies. It is.
So the reimbursement request, um, the invoice total is two thousand, eighty-three dollars and seventy-nine cents. The town's twenty percent match is four hundred sixteen seventy-six. So we are requesting reimbursement of one thousand, six, six, seven point oh-three. Is there a motion? And it should include authorizing somebody to sign on behalf of the Board.
Someone.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the reimbursement request and to have the Select Board Chair sign. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye? Any opposed? None opposed? So I've signed it and it is in the green folder.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Just slid some radios in there.
Or an antenna, which is, yeah.
Um, no, number two is the official word from the Regional Planning Commission on their updates to their due structure. Uh, and I thought it was interesting. They included if it was other regional planning commissions, how much we pay, which is way more, so it's, we're not as, but we're, we're going up. We're not as bad as the other guys. That's kind of what the message is. So, um, that's the official one. And yeah, it does appear that it is going to be for July one twenty-five.
Okay.
So they're on the same fiscal year that we are.
Yeah.
Yes. Yes. So this is, this is their official announcement that they would talk about last time.
So it looks like we will go, it's, it's per capita, so we have three thousand, nine hundred, twenty-four residents, according to. residents according to the last census, and that means $3,924 for our assessment, up from $1,000.
Did they say in here what they were going to do with all the extra money?
Huh.
Haven't, haven't read that yet.
It's tough.
I haven't read it yet. I don't know if they.
There is a rationale and there's benefits. They do, they do talk about it.
Yeah, I mean, they were saying they're moving away from charging towns directly for services, and we have had that.
Yes.
Had them do that.
Yes.
And opting to charge only when grant funds are available to support town projects, so they can provide more to us at no additional cost.
So I had a meeting this morning with Andres and Barbara and Mayor Dungus and we have a, we have a, a, our MS4 project, the city is now responsible for MS4 projects. Uh, so we have some mutual things that can benefit the both of us, so we had a meeting this morning talking about how that can help us and the Planning Commission's going to be part of that with public outreach and stuff, so that is, so we're, we're still going to be utilizing them. So yeah, it's definitely.
The Regional Commission.
Yes. Barbara was there representing the Regional Planning Commission and it's definitely worthwhile to, to have them, so I mean, it's, it's a, yeah.
All right, so this goes in our budget planning folder?
Yep, I've got a, got a list started. The City Water Department has been doing some work along their water transmission line, running through various parts of town. There's a beaver dam on some town property. They would like permission to trap the beavers. I talked with Dave. Dave says, go for it. So they asked if we're okay with them doing that and.
I understand.
Yeah, okay.
We don't have to do it?
Nope, we don't have to do it. Uh, we have had some, the, the short-term rental ordinance goes into effect officially January 1st. We have had people registering already. It's been going well. The inspections have been great and gotten some really good feedback, so it's going well. And that is, I think, everything I have for tonight.
That's good.
Sweet. Yeah.
Do we have any committee meetings?
No.
Okay. So Select Board project list, we continue to chip away at it.
Almost at the point where we can, like, almost across.
Yeah, the town hall monument, we will need something from them, but it sounds like they're not going to have anything.
They kind of got, they got stalled, it sounds like, that the people they were working with aren't going to be available to help, so it sounded like they were going to kind of be like.
Shared use path is moving along. Trail system, pocket park. Dilapidated buildings, succession planning and JP sidewalk, so we've got something. Rooftop solar arrays. We haven't had an energy committee meeting for a long time.
I think those have all kind of.
New public safety building is moving along, and the service road, I haven't talked about that in a long time, but we did get some.
They're supposed to be working on that.
Yeah.
So.
We'll see. Okay.
Between some other things. I think I did see a survey crew down there at one point this summer.
Okay. All right.
Out in the bushes.
What were you doing out in the bushes?
When I was driving by, I saw the little vests out in the bushes.
Got to check for ticks when you're out in the bushes.
I also saw a survey crew surveying from the sidewalk.
Yeah, I saw that, I saw that too, yeah.
Okay. Under action items, dates for per-town meeting.
Per-town meeting.
I'm guessing that's pre-town meeting.
Pre-town meeting, yes.
Has the school suggested any for us?
The school has not. This came from the Supervisory Union. They're trying to align their people in places and times and are reaching out rather early to set this up, which is really kind of nice, so.
Well, this is early, so that is good.
Yep, so Chris was just asking if we had a preference, if we had, and I said we hadn't even talked about it yet, so.
We just, all we, well, we have to work with Carrie to make sure that we provide enough time to have things printed and.
Starts at town meeting day and works backwards. Yeah.
Okay. So that should probably go on for the next meeting as well.
Yep.
The dog complaint that was made, the complaint has been withdrawn, so there is no dog complaint hearing. That's good news. Glad the neighbors were able to work together to do that. Any other new items?
No.
Okay, I would request a brief executive session on a land transaction matter, if you will indulge me.
We will indulge you.
And that means somebody should perhaps make a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion's made and seconded to go into executive session on a land transaction, possible land transaction matter. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, so I don't think this is going to take long. Okay, we're out of the executive session. At 7:24, is there a motion?
Yeah, move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're out. Thanks, everybody.